Good evening. Welcome to the Balfont Borough Council Business Meeting. Would you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have rule call, please?
Mr. Bernier is excused. Mr. Brackville?
Here.
Ms. Cleaton?
Here.
Ms. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. McKean?
Here.
Ms. Purnell?
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy? Mr. Larson is excused, and Mayor Johnson is excused.
Okay, thank you. First on our agenda is the nomination and election of officers. By agreement in early 2022, Borough Council agreed to rotate officers, reorganize annually. Mr. Bernier will step down as council president. Ms. Dan will move from vice president to president, and Mr. Johnson will move from pro temp to vice president. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the officers as noted?
So moved.
I'll second. Brackville.
That was, who made the motion? Okay. Deb Cleaton and Brackville? Thank you. Okay, for rule call, Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
The yeses have it.
Okay, thank you. We now need a nomination and election of a pro tempore. Nominations do not require a second and are voted on in the order that nominations are made. Voting continues until one nominee attains a majority vote. Do I have any nominations?
Nominate Deb Cleaton.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Do we, we still do a rule call vote, correct?
I believe so. There's a couple of different ways, but that's probably the best way.
I think that's best. Let's just do it.
Yes.
Please.
Okay, Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Congratulations, Deb. Any additions to the council meeting agenda for tonight? Okay.
Okay, okay. That's fine. We'll do the end also. Is, is there any public comment
on items on the agenda tonight? I don't, didn't see any. Okay, we will move on to, yes?
I have a question about the comments that are in that section.
Okay, okay.
Um, um, and when I read the first paragraph, no problem. Second paragraph, I got a little bit confused because I could interpret that second paragraph in several different ways. So I had, I would like to have some clarification of what it means. Are you saying that the proposed resolution to be voted on on January 21st is what is exactly what is written in the first crap, or is it something more broadly than that? That's my first question.
Broader than what's, what's?
What's written in the first paragraph, which is who can speak?
Right. The first paragraph is our resolution for that.
Okay.
Okay. The second, the second paragraph was, we had discussed that at the agenda meeting, that it seems to make a little more sense, and we'll vote on it and make a resolution next time, but it seems to make a little more sense as we're discussing things through our council. If someone, if, if someone has some public comment on that, it makes sense to do it before we vote on it, instead of right at the begin, having public comment at the beginning.
So basically, what it's doing is moving that comment period on, topics on the agenda to the actual agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, is that right?
Then the second question is, and this is going back to, which is why I brought this this evening.
Great.
Robert's Rules, is, so would the procedure be that there would be a motion and a second, and then the public and council could comment on it? Is that what the plan is?
Yes, except council would go first and then the public.
Right, right.
That's what we were, our understanding is.
The, so the procedure would be, we would all comment, and then hear that, okay. I prefer, I would preferably prefer to hear them first, because that might change my mind.
Well, again, we're gonna, our goal is to put this in the resolution.
Right.
Update the public comment policy, and it can be edited, you know, depending on votes and all of that, but you're on, you're on track with what the intent is.
Okay.
Right, yeah. And it's, it's on a trial basis. I just thought it was important for people to be able to comment as we're discussing.
Yeah. I do know other municipalities do that.
They do, they do.
Yeah, so I was, it was just a little confusing as to exactly what that second paragraph meant to me, so.
Yeah, well, we can iron that our next, next meeting for that.
Okay, thank you.
That's what that's for. Under communications, does the Missoula Park complaint about the new light in the park, council may take action on that.
You know, I put that, I wasn't sure. Sometimes council refers things to work sessions, sometimes you don't. I left it kind of vague, because not knowing what action might be taken.
Does anybody have thoughts on that?
Well, this is the third time this has come up, and I think West Penn Power puts a brighter light in than Balfont Borough puts lights in. And if we could just get them adjusted down a little bit, maybe they'll still be able to, you know, if they're, especially in the summer, if that's, you know, if that light's out and there's people down there playing, you're not gonna be able to see who they are or anything, what activities are going on. I mean, that's the main thing for me, about the safety and what people were doing. But, you know, this was, last year we got the complaint, this year we got the complaint. Why it took so long to go through that process, I have no idea, but that's my view on it.
The, the other thing in his note, he says that there's, that the park is closed from dusk to dawn. I, I think part of what we need to do is notify him that that was actually changed about four years ago, that all parks are now open 24/7. So that part needs to be clarified with him. The light itself, though, we've had this discussion at else, other places here in town, maybe this should be a work session discussion, because we've talked about having West Penn Power put deflectors so that it doesn't bother people's homes. Or, and it might be more helpful to do something like that if we can talk to Penn, to West Penn Power about the concerns of that this is an ongoing concern that we need to fix.
So would a work session be appropriate for everyone? Anybody else?
I'm in favor of the work session. I have two comments. Talleyrand Park has lights throughout the park for walking in the evening after dark. I, I personally drove out to Reynolds Avenue, looked at the light. The, actually, the street light on an arm puts more light into the resident of complaints yard than the new light that was installed. The new, I, I made the motion to install the light based on safety factors. During the summer, we have, sometimes we have questionable activity out there. The police go out. It's way back in the back corner of the dark field. So at the time, Chief Weaver agreed that it was a good idea to do it. I think that the, the actual post light, or the street light, is brighter than, to the resident than the light that was newly installed. And it now gets dark 4:30, 5 o'clock. People want to walk their dogs after they come home from work, and it's certainly helpful to have some light there to give them some direction in the park. So I know we can discuss this during work session. I don't mean to take up time, but others were commenting, and I agree with scheduling a work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody else on that before we move on? Okay, any other comments on any other communications?
Can we continue to run down through these?
Yeah.
Can we just do it that way?
Sure, sure. The 2025 Center County Liquid Fuels Program is unable to provide financial assistance to any of the borough projects.
So what that, does that mean for our plans for this year?
Well, we applied for funding to do the crosswalk project. We have about 50, I'm gonna, we're estimating, because we, we won't know till we get the bids in. We're estimating we have about 50% of the funds needed. We're hoping with the grant application to get up to about 75%. We'll have to look for other ways or sources of funding to complete all, I think there's 11 crosswalks between High Street and Bishop Street on spring. You know, our goal was to do all of them at the one, at one time, but budget and resources will, will dictate what we get done. But that, that's really what the application was for. In the county, about once every four years, we get funded. So it wasn't a strong possibility, but it was worth trying. But we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do with the funds we have, and this, this, we're gonna bid out the project here pretty soon and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Terrapin, Balfont Grand Opening is this Thursday, January 9th at 11:00 a.m. I believe all of council and borough is invited to that.
Is this a reschedule, the one that happened or didn't happen in December?
Yes, they were waiting on, I guess, some permits or whatever. They now have those in place, so this is the one they were predicting or planning for.
Okay, thank you note from Scott Roat, Balfont EMS. That was nice to hear from him, since we are paying them a little bit more. We have a letter to council from Steve and Denise Snook. They are resigning from doing the Balfont Arts and Crafts Festival. They've done a great job on that. Deb, I know you've worked with them on that.
Yes, they've put a lot of time, their own time and effort into making the, the event the success that it has been for all these years.
Yeah, they've worked hard on that. Junior council, we are gonna move to the next meeting. Is that correct? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Brackville.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, under reports, the mayor will have that report next week, next meeting. Ms. Thompson submitted her report just for the public. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January 13th at 5:00 p.m., and HARB will meet on Tuesday, January 14th at 8:30 a.m. Reminder of some of the vacancies. HARB has one vacancy, the Planning Commission has a vacancy for an alternate, and the zoning hearing board has one vacancy. You can get more information on our website or call the borough office.
Curiosity question. The HARB one, that's one of those advisory boards that there's specific people to have to fill specific seats. Which one is this one vacancy? Is this anybody in the borough can do, or is this a professional?
Once we get down to the applications, we can look at it. You're talking about the vacancies. There's a little bit more information. I can maybe figure out which, where the vacancies are, once we get down to that part.
This part?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, current node business. The Penn dot traffic signal information was included in your packet. Any comments on the information itself? The Penn dot traffic signal maintenance agreement instructions were also included. Any comment, questions on that? We have an application for Penn dot highway occupancy permit related to the new elementary school along Airport Road. Council action is requested. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the application?
So moved.
Second.
So it was Cleaton and Tosti Vacy?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, the next one. Penn dot traffic signal.
Do you go do the rule call?
Yeah, we could.
Okay, that's all right, no problem, no problem. Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Penn dot traffic signal application for Airport and Zion Roads. Do I have a motion and a second to approve that?
So moved. Johnson. Second. Brackville.
Discussion?
Ready?
Nope, okay.
Move?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you have something, Joanne, with that?
This is the next one.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right. Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Penn dot traffic signal application for Parkview Boulevard and Zion Road. I will need a motion and a second to approve the application being signed and submitted to Penn dot.
I'd like to make a conditional motion of approval, as there is an error at the bottom of that page where it's referring back to the elementary school, and it needs to refer to the, to our traffic study that was completed two years ago. So once that paperwork is, is corrected, then I, then we can do it. So it's a conditional motion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Give me a second.
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Any other discussion on that?
Okay.
Okay.
Ready for a moment?
I'm ready.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Penn dot traffic signal maintenance agreement for signal at Airport and Zion Road. Council action is requested. I need a motion and a second to approve the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second, Brackville.
Thanks, Randy. Any discussion?
Yes. That was a twenty-some-on-page document, and in that maintenance agreement, there, on page 14, Exhibit A, there is several staff positions that are listed that say we must maintain for our traffic maintenance. They list a traffic engineer, a signal specialist, and a signal technician. We don't have those titles, so I assume that Matt Alman would be the supervi, the, the traffic engineer, because the description?
We use a contractor. If it's, if it's relatively simple, there's things we can do in-house, but the more complicated parts of a traffic signal, we use a contractor.
Okay, so all of those, through, through, would be done through the contractor, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then on page 15, which is Exhibit B, it lists names and companies, so that's where the contractor is listed. And it also lists Matt Alman has a supervisor. So, and that, those two together would, let me see. So does that mean that we will be contracting all, out all of our traffic signal, or is there some stuff that we will be doing in-house?
We, we already have maintenance agreements for every traffic signal, except for these new ones, and we use a contractor the same way I just described. Matt is the contact for emergencies, and then we listed the con, the vendor contractor information
Yeah.
on the form. So we, we feel we have it covered. We, we already do this every day.
Okay.
We have these agreements in place now.
Okay, let me see. And the final question is, it, I know that this costs us funding to, to go out to a contractor. Are we going to be adding additional funding this year or next year for this additional light?
Well, the, the lights being paid for at Airport by, Airport Road anyway, the maintenance agreement speaks to that light. That's being paid for by the school district. So I don't know when it's gonna be built, but it won't, it won't come out of the borough funds to, to construct it.
But I'm talking about after that?
The maintenance, you know, it'll be probably under warranty for a while. I don't expect it to be in '25. They're not, they're trying to get it done before they open in '26, so probably '26.
Okay. And I noticed that this is, we don't have a maintenance agreement for, for Zion and Parkview. Is there, should there be a separate maintenance agreement for that one, since that one is also?
Yes, I, I expect that to be on an upcoming agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Joanne. Anybody else have anything on this one?
Ready? Mr. Martin, yeah, Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we on this one?
We just did the maintenance agreement, so we're down to this one.
This one, okay, because that's also a maintenance agreement. Submission too. Okay. Okay, resolution number 0106202501, related to Penn dot traffic signal maintenance agreement submission. I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I'd like to make this a conditional motion as well because there are a couple blanks on this document that aren't filled in. I talked to Ralph just before, and he said he can figure out what it should be and fill them in for us. So as soon as that's done, then I'm willing to pass it.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else?
We need a second.
Do we get a second?
I'll second, Brackville.
Thank you. We can do a roll call?
Roll call. Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, next. Resolution 01062025-02, authorizing borough officials to sign Penn dot-related applications and maintenance agreements. I will need a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Cleaton?
Second, Johnson.
Thank you, Doug. Any discussion?
Okay. Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Okay. Description of authorities, boards, and commissions. In an effort to get the word out about vacancies on some of the borough's ABCs, a short description of each will be read. Some vacancies have residency requirements and some do not. Interested citizens can find out more at the borough's website.
I can, what I was gonna do is paraphrase what we have in the packets of our information here and, and point people to our borough website, which is www.belfont.net. It has all the more complete information on all of our authorities, boards, and commissions. We call them ABCs for short. But what we have here this evening, usually the beginning of the year in January, we do the reappointments. So the openings are on the Airport Authority, BETA, which is Belfont Area Industrial Development Authority, the Borough Authority, which oversees the water and sewer systems that we have, the Belfont Civil Service Commission, which does the testing for full-time police officer candidates for employment at Belfont, the Historical Architectural Review Board, which is, we call it HARB for short, the Shade Tree Commission, which governs or oversees the trees planted in the street right-ofways throughout the borough, the Planning Commission, which makes recommendations to Borough Council. They, they review subdivision ordinances or plans or lot consolidation plans or zoning amendment possibilities, considerations. They bring back recommendations to council. The zoning hearing board is a quasi-judicial board. They act independently of council. They have their own legal solicitor involved, and they review variances, something that's different in the zoning, somebody wants to apply for, they go to the zoning hearing board. That, that board makes a decision. And the vacancy board is when there's a vacancy on council and council has not filled that vacancy within 30 days. A citizen joins the council, making it a 10-member board. The citizen, called the vacancy board chair, is the chair of the vacancy board, and then the, the board has a certain timeline to make a decision on filling a vacancy. Um, let me see, just, so that, that's kind of, that's the openings right now. I gave you a little bit of information on these entities. I just look it over here real quick. The Center County Airport Authority, you know, it's an entity that really only, only, the only responsibility is the parking lot in the entrance in the terminal to the airport. Penn State University owns and operates the runways and that part of the business. I mentioned the Belfont Area Industrial Development Authority. This organization was created a long, long time ago by the borough, and we more recently used it as an, as a redevelopment authority. And we noted here that it, you know, that group helped really do the waterfront redevelopment project as, you know, when the Bush House burned down and the Cero building, we needed to sort of revitalize that area of the borough. So they took on that project and worked with the borough on that project. The Borough Authority I mentioned oversees water and sewer activities, sets the policies, sets the rates, looks at what, what the update, what changes are taking place in the systems, and focuses just on those two systems. The, as I mentioned, Civil Service Commission, they handle, you know, the full-time candidates testing for, again, for employment at Belfont. There's a written test, there's an oral test involved, and a scoring process involved, and they handle it independently of the chief and the department and the council as well. And then the list is given to council, and the council picks from the list. The Historical Review Board I mentioned does all, anything in the historic district that is going to be changed from a building perspective on the outside, gets reviewed first. It's something that can be seen from the public right of way. This review board looks at the application, makes recommendation for approval or not approval to Borough Council, and Borough Council makes the final decision. And then I mentioned the Shade Tree Commission. Any tree in the right-of-way, uh, is governed by the borough. So if a property owner wants to take it down or anything, or plant a new one, they go through the Shade Tree Commission process. I, I think I've touched on the other ones. I mentioned Planning Commission fairly well, zoning hearing board, vacancy board. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, you had a question, I'm sorry.
It was about HARB?
Yes.
And which is the seat that is currently vac, is that a resident?
No, no.
Or is that, can there be anybody, or is that a professional?
No, that, that was Mr. McGinley. He represented the business, non-resident, you know, business person. I, I think he was a person of interest for HARB. There's three positions that are, you know, people who are knowledgeable and interested in business, or interested. Let me, let me just double-check that.